Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 24th, 2017 City Council Legislative Session. Before we begin, I would ask everyone to please silence any electronic devices they might have. And also, if you need to make a phone call, please exit the room and make it in the hallway. For some reason, an emergency should arise during the meeting, please exit the room, make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs should that, for some reason, be blocked. Make a left and a right and go down the stairs. If you need assistance, please ask us and we'll be happy to provide it to you. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Andrew Morgan of Emmanuel Baptist Church to the podium for the invocation. Pastor Morgan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to do two things this evening. Read two passages briefly and then pray. The first passage pertains to the roles that you men and women fill for the city, and the second pertains to the meeting that you'll be having this evening. The first is found in Paul's Letter to the Church in Rome in Chapter 13. He says that "everyone must submit himself to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established." And then, in the Old Testament Book of Proverbs, we read in Chapter 21 and verse 31, "That a horse is made ready for battle, but the victory rests with the Lord." And so, as you engage in business on behalf of our city in responsible positions that you have been elected to, we pray for your wisdom and that you will honor the Lord in all the decisions that you make for His glory and for the good of our city. And so, would you pray with me this evening? Father, it is a privilege to be a citizen of this great nation and to sit in this place this evening, surrounded by men and women elected freely because of the freedoms that we have as a nation, to serve the people of this city. And we pray, God, for their wisdom, recognizing that true wisdom comes from you and you only. God, we pray that as they make the horse ready for the battle, that they'll trust you with the victory and its outcome. Father, we pray that you would guide their decisions such that all that is made and determined this evening would lead to the betterment of our town, Father, and ultimately, that many men and women would come to a realization of the beauty of the gospel of Jesus Christ. And it's in His name we pray this evening. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Morgan. Please rise and join with me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
Some move.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some move.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda this evening, we have the March 13th closed session minutes, the March 27th regular meeting minutes, and the March 27th closed session minutes. Resolution Number 2745 authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore to expend grant funds in the amount of $600. Resolution Number 2746 to amend the language of the Tenants' Rights Lease Addendum to include notification of shared HVAC systems in multi-unit structures. Resolution Number 2747 authorizing the chief of police to enter into a MOA between the Salisbury Police Department, the Wycomico County Department of Social Services, the Wycomico State's Attorney's Office, Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, Fruitland Police Department, Delmar, Maryland Police Department, the Wycomico County Health Department, and MAC Inc., in order to conduct joint investigations to protect and assist in the protection and safety of vulnerable adults. And we have Resolution Number 2748 approving and adopting the corridor study plan transforming US 13 into Salisbury Boulevard. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Welcome home.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
Some move.
Mr. Irtan, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening. There are two items this evening. The first one is an award of contract for Munis Asset Management System. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a purchase requisition from the Department of Public Works to procure the Munis Capital Asset and Munis Work Orders Fleet and Facilities Modules from Tyler Technologies. Tyler Technologies is the largest software company in the nation focused on providing integrated software and technology services to the public sector. Munis is Tyler's exclusive enterprise resource planning solution, which is currently utilized by the City of Salisbury as its sole financial, payroll, and procurement platform. By integrating the Capital Asset and Work Orders Fleet and Facilities Modules into our existing Munis suite of products, the city can reap the benefits of a centralized workflow, elimination of repetitive data entry, and gain access to data that will be up-to-date and accurate in real time. Per Section SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding: Exceptions of the City of Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance: contracts for professional services or for personal services requiring special training and skill. This charter designation, therefore, allows the City of Salisbury to designate a procurement as a sole source, which is defined as the presence of only one vendor or supplier that possesses the unique ability or capability to meet the particular requirements of the solicitation. Procurement of the required goods or services can therefore be obtained without competitive bidding. Since Munis is a proprietary product of Tyler Technologies, these modules can only be obtained through this vendor, thus qualifying this as a sole source procurement. Funds to support the purchase are available in the accounts noted in your packet. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to award a purchase contract to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $144,532.
Any questions?
Very good. The next item this evening is an award of bid. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Public Works to solicit proposals for RFP 08-17 Aquatic Harvester. This solicitation sought proposals from qualified and experienced firms to purchase an aquatic weed harvester, supporting transfer conveyor and transport trailer. Procurement Department followed standard solicitation practices by advertising in the Daily Times, on the City of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising in the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. Four vendors submitted a proposal by the due date and time of Tuesday, March 7th at 2:30 p.m. Three of the four vendors were determined to be responsive and responsible, and their proposals were evaluated according to the criteria specified in the solicitation document, and then they were ranked on a scale of zero (unacceptable) to four (superior). Spooner Machine Incorporated received an overall evaluation score of 3.6. DND Products received an overall evaluation score of 2.5. And Berkey USA LLC received an overall evaluation score of 2.1. Spooner Machine provided the option of two harvester configurations, one of which is the WH 225 SS, which is a low-profile model that would be well-suited to low clearance areas. The procurement department does concur with the award recommendations supported by the Department of Public Works, and therefore requests council's approval to award a contract to Spooner Machine in the amount of $139,463. There are sufficient funds to cover this purchase in the account noted in your packet.
Did we talk about this like last year or a year before?
We didn't go out for an award. I don't know if anything may be in the CIP plan.
We did. We did talk about it last year.
The weed harvester purchase was a budgeted item. It grew out of a meeting we had with Shoemaker Pond.
Yeah, I remember that one.
Okay, that's kind of what started the process.
Okay. So, it's the same thing that we were talking about?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I think we talked about it in the budget meeting.
Yeah, we did, the budget meeting.
Okay. That's where I remember it.
The budget meeting.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, I'll now take a vote on the award of bids. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, are you going to do the resolutions? Okay. I'll now entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2736.
Some move.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtan.
This is all new to me.
Good evening.
All right. The next two resolutions, Resolution 2736 and 2737, are both related to the Fenzel Only Road Annexation. The first is Resolution 2736 is a resolution of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of certain area of land contiguous to, and binding upon the corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Fenzel Property Only Road Annexation, beginning for the same at a point on the corporate limit said point lying on the easterly right-of-way line of a private road, running in a northerly direction from Only Road to a point at the southwest corner of Cedar Crossing Property LLC, extending east to a point, and then extending south to the northern side of Only Road near the intersection of Perry Drive. May I stop there, Mr. President?
Okay, that's fine. I did see the work session on video, and I know Mr. Irtan had a question about the...
Sorry.
No, the Only Road. There was a question on the structures.
Mm-hmm.
That's going to be coming back before the planning board.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions about the... Nope. If not, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2736, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. President, I think what I had asked is that someone would contact the police chief in order to make sure when they're building out on Only Road, some of the issues that the police department has had in policing the area, some of the quality of the build. I mean, that's... We're going to get what we get, but certainly, the police have been out there enough knowing what they've got to do with the setup of the place, but I appreciate the offer to have the planning committee come back and look at that.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2737.
Some move.
Mr. Irtan, Mr. Boda.
Resolution Number 2737 is a resolution of the City of Salisbury to adopt an annexation plan for certain area of land situated contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Fenzel Property Only Road Annexation, beginning for the same at a point on the corporate limit said point lying on the easterly right-of-way line of a private road, running in a northerly direction from Only Road to a point at the southwest corner of Cedar Crossing Property LLC, extending east to a point and then extending south to the northern side of Only Road near the intersection of Perry Drive.
Any questions? I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2737, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2749.
Some move.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan. Mr. Mayor.
Resolution Number 2749 is a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Salisbury, Maryland and Wycomico County, Maryland, for the delivery of fire, rescue, advanced operations, and emergency medical services, known as the Fire Services Agreement. The Salisbury Fire Department is equipped to provide fire, rescue, advanced operations service, and emergency medical services to the residents of the city. And Wycomico County desires that these services be provided to the residents and property owners outside of the City of Salisbury corporate limits. And the City of Salisbury has agreed to provide these services to the residents and property owners outside of the corporate limits in the area designated as the Salisbury Fire District, in exchange for financial reimbursements and contributions from the county. And the city desires to cooperate with the county to provide these services to the residents and property owners outside of the City of Salisbury corporate limits. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city council hereby approves the agreement negotiated by the mayor and authorizes the city to enter into a Fire Services Agreement.
Questions? All right. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2749, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. At this time, we will be entertaining a motion to approve ordinance Number 2420 for the first reading.
Some move.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. At this point, I will open up the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak, either for or against this ordinance. If you are going to speak, please rise now and be sworn in.
Do you have questions?
Hi. Do someone swear or affirm the testimony or reveal the truth?
I assume, based on your comments, that you're not here to make a statement, but you'd be here to answer questions. All right. Since there is no one else speaking for or against, I will close the public hearing at this time. Mr. Tillman, you're up.
Yes, Mr. President. This is ordinance Number 2420, and it's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, pursuant to Chapter 17.228 of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code and Section 4.04 of Article 66B of the Annotated Code of Maryland for the purposes of amending Section 17.122.030 and 17.122.040G, and to add sales and service of commercial trucks, heavy equipment, et cetera, as permitted uses, and to permit open lot display in Westwood Commercial Park, PDD Number 2. Whereas the ongoing application of administration enforcement of Title 17 of the zoning code of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, amendment that will keep Title 17 current, whereas the mayor and city council may amend Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code pursuant to the authority granted by Article 66B of the Maryland Annotated Code in accordance with specific provisions of Chapter 17.228, amendments and rezoning of Title 17 zoning, and whereas the mayor and city council requested that Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission periodically review Title 17 in light of existing procedural practices and input from the city council and members of the public, and whereas Kraus Properties LLC submitted an application to amend the text of the Westwood Commercial Park, PDD Number 2, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the planning commission in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 17.228 of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code on March 16, 2017, and whereas the planning commission did recommend approval of the proposed amendments to Section 17.122.030 and 17.122.040G, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. amend Section 17.122.030 permitted uses by adding Item D as follows. Item D: heavy equipment sales, comma, service and repair, selling, comma, leasing, comma, and repairing vehicles and/or machinery that may include, but are not limited to, commercial trucks, including tractor-trailers, agricultural equipment, construction, excavation, equipment, mobile cranes, boats, yachts, buses, or similar heavy equipment. Accessory uses may include, but are not limited to, body shop, including painting, machine shop, outside display areas, parts, sales, and office uses, but excludes dismantling or salvage. Also amending Section 17.122.040 accessory uses and structures by... Amending Item G as follows... That's a typo there. And that Item G should read "other accessory uses and structures clearly incidental to, customary to, and associated with the permitted use on a site. The outside storage of materials in open lot display is subject to approval by the Salisbury Planning Commission as part of the approved comprehensive development plan." And be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage, but in no event 10 days after the date of the council's public hearing.
Questions?
Do we need a motion to fix the word? Or are we okay?
Is that... Do we need a motion?
No, I think that's just a spelling typo. Somebody stuck a D in there instead of a G. I think we're okay there. I've read it correctly with a G at the end of it.
If there are no questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2420, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2419 for the second reading.
Some move.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of FY 2017 budget to appropriate funds for traffic equipment and operating. Whereas as a result of work performed by the Wycomico County Board of Education for the construction of Bennett High School, improvements to streetlights were required along College Avenue, and whereas the City of Salisbury Traffic Division of the Public Works Department purchased and installed necessary streetlights, and whereas the Wycomico County Board of Education reimbursed the city for actual material expenses, and whereas a streetlight budget should be increased to accommodate these efforts, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2017 budget and the street lighting budget be entered hereby amended as follows: increase the miscellaneous revenue account 01-000-456911 by $14,941, and increase the highway lighting account 31152-556201 by $14,941.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2419 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2421 for the first reading.
Some move.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan. Mr. Tillman.
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2017 general fund budget to appropriate insurance proceeds and a refund received in fiscal year 2017 to aid in the purchase of a replacement vehicle for the police fleet. Whereas the Salisbury Police Animal Control Unit, AC-1, a 2003 Ford F-150 King Cab... I'll skip the serial number. Was involved in a motor vehicle accident and deemed a total loss, and whereas the city received an insurance adjustment for vehicle AC-1 in the amount of $6,655, and whereas the Salisbury Police Patrol Unit, Number 1362, a 2013 Chevrolet Caprice, and Patrol Unit 1475, a 2014 Chevrolet Caprice, sustained damage due to a severe rainstorm, and whereas the city received an insurance adjustment for the repairs of Unit 1362 and 1475 in the amount of $4,305.93, and whereas the Salisbury Police Animal Control Unit, AC-1, needs to be replaced, and whereas replacement of this vehicle will allow the Salisbury Police Department to maintain a sufficient number of animal control vehicles to effectively patrol all areas of the city, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department is requesting the insurance adjustment for vehicle AC-1 in the amount of $6,655, and the insurance adjustment for units 1362 and 1475 of $4,305.93 be placed in the Salisbury Police Department Police Services Vehicle Account 21021-577025. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department will utilize the funds appropriated from the insurance adjustment and the refund check to purchase a new animal control vehicle, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the city's fiscal year 2017 general fund budget be hereby amended as follows: increase insurance proceeds 01000-456935 by $6,655, increase insurance proceeds account... same account number by $4,305.93, and increase the police department budget by the total of those two, which is $11,958.11.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2421, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2422 for the first reading.
Some move.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Brutusil.
Ordinance Summar 2422 is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 17 general fund budget to appropriate insurance proceeds received in FY 17 to aid in the purchase of a new vehicle for the police fleet. Am I reading the same thing again?
No, the numbers are different.
Okay. All right. It seemed like deja vu here. Salisbury policeman... Wait a minute. Yeah, okay, it's different. I'm sorry. Whereas the Salisbury Police Animal Control Unit, AC-1, a 2003 Ford F-150 King Cab, was involved in a motor vehicle accident and deemed a total loss, and whereas the replacement of the animal control vehicle will allow the Salisbury Police Department to maintain a sufficient number of animal control vehicles to effectively patrol all areas of the city, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department is requesting the commission of accreditation refund check in the amount of $997.18 be placed in the SPD Police Services Vehicle Account 21021-577025, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department will utilize the funds appropriated from the insurance adjustment and purchase a new animal control vehicle, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that city's fiscal year 2017 general fund budget is hereby amended as follows, with an increase in insurance proceeds of 01000-456935 by $997.18, and an increase in the police department budget of $997.18.
Any questions?
Yeah, just maybe the only question is procedural. Why do we have two ordinances? When in the last one, we combined several insurance proceeds. Why don't we just put all of them in one?
I believe Mr. Cordray told the police department to do it that way.
We'll find out.
I don't know what the reason was.
Yeah.
This is the way they were presented from finance, and I will check what...
Unless it's a timing issue. But whatever. Okay. Hearing no questions, all those in favor of approving ordinance Number 2422, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2423.
Some move.
Ms. Jackson. Who was it? Mr. Irtan?
This is an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, for the period of July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period, and establishing an appropriation for the water and sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule A entitled Operating Budget Appropriations are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, to fund operations of the City of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule B, capital project appropriations, are hereby appropriated for capital projects. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule C, anticipated grant expenditures, are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memorandums in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained that the tax levy be in the same as hereby set at $1.06 per $100 of assessed value... and six cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation of all real property that is non homeowner occupied at ninety cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation of all real property that is homeowner occupied and homeowner occupied status shall be determined based upon the final record received from the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation that is used by the city to bill the real property taxes at two dollars and thirty three cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for all personal property categorized as railroads and utilities and at two dollars per one hundred of assessed valuation for all other personal property subject to taxation by the City of Salisbury for general fund purposes including debt service purposes exclusive of revenues derived from the water and sewer fund for the debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities and paragraph two, all tax levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July first, two thousand seventeen and shall be due and payable as specified in Title fourteen of the tax property article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. And be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury that a public hearing on the proposed budget ordinance will be held on or after six P M. on May twenty second, two thousand seventeen in room three oh one of the city government office building, one twenty five North Division Street, Salisbury, Maryland.
Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion to approve ordinance number two four two three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Before we proceed, I just want to make it a point of emphasis that there will be a budget hearing on, as Mr. Tillman had said, on May twenty second, two thousand seventeen at six P M. So please make note of that and there will also be three sessions, three work sessions. Ms. Nichols, is this published on the, on the website?
I believe it is.
Okay. So please refer to the website, but just to give you the dates of those, Tuesday, April, tomorrow, April twenty fifth, Tuesday, May second, and Tuesday, May sixteenth prior to the public hearing on May twenty second. Okay?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Cordray says he's working on getting you an answer before the meeting ends.
Telepathic.
He just replied to the email that fast. I don't know what he's doing at home. Probably watching this.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Cordray. Okay. I'll now obtain a motion to approve ordinance number two four two four.
So moved.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Jackson? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury, Maryland to amend water and sewer rates to increase rates by fifteen percents and making said changes effective for all bills dated October first, two thousand seventeen and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget of the City of Salisbury and the appropriations thereby made and established for the purposes of the Department of Public Works now therefore be ordained and enacted by the Council of the City of Salisbury that the following water and sewer rates schedules shall be adopted by the City of Salisbury. Water and sewer rate schedule, schedule one, metered water rates in city rates residential and small commercial, there will be a minimum charge of twenty two dollars and eighty seven cents per quarter, a commodity charge of three dollars and forty one cents per thousand gallons. Under commercial, customer charge four hundred twenty seven dollars and ninety nine cents per quarter, commodity charge of one dollars and ninety eight cents per thousand gallons. Large commercial slash industrial, customer charge of six hundred sixty one dollars and forty four cents per quarter, a commodity charge of one dollar and fifty eight cents per thousand gallons. Under schedule two, metered water charges outside city rates residential and small commercial minimum charge forty five dollars and seventy five cents per quarter, commodity charge six dollars and eighty three cents per thousand gallons. Under commercial, customer charge of eight hundred fifty five dollars and ninety nine cents per quarter, commodity charge of three dollars and ninety eight cents per thousand gallons. Large commercial slash industrial, customer charge of one thousand three hundred twenty two dollars and ninety cents per quarter, commodity charge three dollars and twenty cents per thousand gallons. Under schedule three, metered water charges, Warwick Community College and Urban Service District rates residential and small commercial, there will be a minimum charge of thirty four dollars and thirty cents per quarter, commodity charge of five dollars and thirteen cents per thousand gallons. Under commercial, customer charge of six hundred forty one dollars and ninety cents, ninety nine cents per quarter, commodity charge of two dollars and ninety eight cents per thousand gallons. Large commercial slash industrial, customer charge nine hundred ninety two dollars and seventeen cents per quarter, commodity charge two dollars and thirty nine cents per thousand gallons. Under schedule Roman numeral four, sewer charges in city rates residential and small commercial minimum charge fifty six dollars and forty nine cents per quarter, commodity charge eight dollars and forty seven cents per thousand gallons. Commercial, customer charge one thousand sixty seven dollars and fourteen cents per quarter, commodity charge four dollars and ninety three cents per thousand gallons. Large commercial slash industrial, customer charge of one thousand six hundred forty six dollars and eleven cents per quarter, commodity charge of three dollars and ninety four cents per thousand gallons. Under schedule Roman numeral five, sewer charges outside city rates residential and small commercial minimum charge of one hundred thirteen dollars per quarter, commodity charge sixteen dollars and ninety five cents per thousand gallons. Commercial, customer charge two thousand one hundred thirty four dollars and twenty six cents per quarter, commodity charge nine dollars and eighty three cents per thousand gallons. Large and commercial slash industrial, customer charge three thousand two hundred ninety two dollars and twenty two cents per quarter, commodity charge seven dollars and ninety one cents per thousand gallons. Under schedule Roman numeral six, sewer charges, Warwick Community College and Urban Service District rates residential and small commercial minimum charge eighty four dollars and seventy five cents per quarter, commodity charge twelve dollars and seventy two cents per thousand gallons. Under commercial, customer charge one thousand six hundred seventy dollars per quarter, se- excuse me, one thousand six hundred dollars and seventy cents per quarter, commodity charge seven dollars and thirty seven cents per thousand gallons. Large commercial slash industrial, customer charge two thousand four hundred sixty nine dollars and fifteen cents per quarter, commodity charge five dollars and ninety four cents per thousand gallons. Under schedule seven, sewer charges, sewer only customers, there will be rate number of fixtures under one to two fixtures quarterly in city rate is seventy two dollars and twenty five cents, quarterly outside city rate one forty four dollars and fifty one cents, quarterly urban service district rate one hundred eight dollars and thirty nine cents. Under two, three to five fixtures, it will be one hundred and eight dollars and thirty nine cents quarterly in city, two hundred sixteen dollars and seventy eight cents quarterly outside city and one hundred sixty two dollars and fifty eight cents quarterly urban service district rates. And for every five fixtures over twenty, there will be a charge of sixty four dollars and twenty four cents quarterly in city, one hundred twenty eight dollars and forty seven cents quarterly outside city and ninety six dollars and thirty five cents in the quarterly urban service district rates. Under schedule eight, commercial and industrial activities, for each fire service, annual in city rate will be three hundred seventy three dollars, annual outside city rate will be seven hundred forty six dollars, for each standby operational service, three hundred seventy three dollars in city and seven hundred and forty six dollars outside city. Would you like me to read the definitions?
No, no, don't read the definitions.
Thought we'd find. Give you the rates so that people would know where they were going to be charged.
Any questions?
In twenty four twenty four, it says the increase of rates is fifteen percent. I, I know that's not a placeholder, that's actually what the new rate would be under the proposed budget. Now, we didn't put the numbers in for the parking authority or any of those other rates that went up on the one above it. Is that just? I mean, I imagine there'll be some horse trading down the road somewhere when we get to some of these numbers, but is it wise to put the fifteen percent in there if you're not going to put it in all of the ones that are increased on the one above it? I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
One, what are you talking about?
Scratch it?
No, well, there's.
Like it in.
That's the next ordinance is all the other fees in the city separate from.
I know, but those aren't, I mean, they're not necessarily set yet because the budget hasn't been passed, but fifteen percents on this one.
Yeah.
The tax rate went down for some.
Proposed.
I understand that.
But to Jim's point, to use that in the description, I think it, you know, it has the potential to be invalid later.
I mean, it's gonna, all of it will change when the final budget is passed. If it's, if it's a nitpick, just look at me and go, it's a nitpick.
No, no, no. I, I don't think it's a nitpick. You scratch it at this point, then you don't have to deal with it at any other point. Do we need amendment to scratch that?
Yes. I would, I would, if you're going to amend that portion, I don't think that's.
All right, will someone make a motion to amend and strike fifteen percent?
So moved.
Mr. Boda?
Second.
Mr. Ierton? Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's five zero. Now we can, anything else on, on this?
Will Mr. Cordray be available during the process?
Yes, oh yeah.
I know what we have in the book is new numbers, I'm trying to follow along as we go, just maybe if he could have the old numbers so that we see.
Changes. Highlight changes.
I think that's what we did last year, they, we ended up showing.
Both sides.
You know, current and then new, new rate.
You want to see back a couple of years? What do you want, just, just current?
Just leisure.
No, I, I just think maybe for public edification, it's, when we're going is if we show the current rate and then what the new rate is, I think that kind of, it clarifies it.
It's not necessary, but I, I like to see trends, but that's, we can talk about that for next time. I'm trending.
He's sitting in front of his computer right now, so.
Okay. He'll have an answer for you in five minutes.
He already has an answer to the other portion if you, if and when you want it.
Okay. No, let's, let's, let's get through this. Okay. All those in favor of ordinance number two four two four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. I'll obtain a motion to approve ordinance number two four two five.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton?
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury. Did I hear something? Okay. An ordinance to the City of Salisbury, Maryland to set fee, fees for the FY two thousand eighteen and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the fees charged by the city are revised periodically, excuse me, are reviewed periodically and revised as needed to recapture expenses incurred by the city and whereas the city, the fees, whereas the fees listed in the attached two thousand eighteen fee schedule exhibit one are an attempt to identify and list all fees, some of which are revised in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget of the City of Salisbury and whereas some of the fees may have been inadvertently omitted from the schedule, any existing fees not listed in the attached two thousand eighteen fee schedule shall remain as currently set forth in the Salisbury Municipal Code. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the Council of the City of Salisbury that the fee amounts listed in the attached exhibit one fee schedule shall be adopted by the City of Salisbury and the amounts set forth therein shall supersede the course by the fee amounts prescribed in the Salisbury Municipal Code until one or more of the said fees are subsequently amended. In effect, this will allow you to set a fee schedule each year to make changes later if necessary.
This is what we talked about during the budget process last year.
And the fee schedule that you're looking at is, is a work, still a work in progress. We're, we're going to try and finalize that between now and the next reading of this schedule. There's some definitions in there that I think need some clarity, we want to double check and make sure we picked up as much as we possibly can.
And that will be done for the next reading, hopefully.
That is the, uh.
Plan. We have no plan B, so let's, let's get it done. Okay. Any other questions?
And then fines are not included in this, that's complete, that's separate from the fees.
That, I believe that is the, the current thinking, yes, that we will, that fines are not to be included in this, in that schedule, you will see a few fines listed, but I think the current thought is that they'll be removed and left alone in the code.
Okay. Okay. No other questions? All those in favor of ordinance number two four two five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
During this course of the evening, some, without me seeing, a delegate Anderton arrived and I would like to invite him up since the session is over, if you want to give us your highlights or your lowlights, either one, we'd be glad to hear it.
I have to go to the grocery store to let you know we were going to do a Carl Anderton simpsonian, but I'm willing.
No, 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 no.
Because we have something we really want to talk with you about that really has to do with the next session.
I don't want to keep you from the ice cream, bro.
So.
Hey, how are you?
Thanks, coffee. We'll be quick.
It's coffee. Half and half and half, that sort of stuff.
So first off, let me, uh.
Let me apologize for, for being late. I, I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to make it or not, I had a call and I had to rush down to, to Chrisfield, they had rushed my grandfather up to the hospital and it's one of those, he's ninety one, so they say he's the hospital, you, you get down there.
Absolutely.
But it ended up, looks like it's just going to be pneumonia, so he's going to, he's going to be fine and so this is the only jacket I had in the car.
Good to hear.
So it doesn't match at all, but, but we do, we do. We're here, so.
You look dapper.
You look cute.
You seem more like a hologram.
Yeah, right on.
Well, your blues kind of match.
Kind of blues.
You know, long time, some of the time, you know, but, no, it's, it's good to be home, it's a great session, I think we did really good in the budget. The governor, Speaker Bush, all came together and took care of us. You know, I, I was able to work with the mayor and, and many of you here on the downtown project and we secured a million dollars in state funding. And I think it's the first time that, that the city's had their own line item in the capital budget like that, so it's, it's really neat and I think this is the first year that, that we'll see that line item in those budgets. And, you know, highway user revenues, I know you're looking at the budget, you know, Councilman Ierton, when he was mayor, I mean, you would have dreamed of had nine hundred and eighty one thousand dollars for, to pave streets, right? So we're, so we're getting there, we're getting across the million dollar threshold is a forty thousand dollar increase over last year and, and we had two bills in that we couldn't find anybody to oppose, but we couldn't get a vote on. So there's some little political Jerry stuff going on there and, and we'll, we'll keep pushing and, until we get something done so we can get it fixed, because you should be somewhere around one point four, somewhere in there, so we're going to get there, but, you know, but it was, it was awesome, you know, I'm blessed to represent Salisbury, Delmar and Fruitland up in Annapolis and, and, you know, we had some really good, good bills come through to help a lot of our smaller communities across the shore and so, you know, I'm, I'm pretty happy to come home with, with what we've done, so, you know, of course, you know me, you can get up with me anytime if you don't have any questions tonight, I know that a good councilman's going to get his coffee in half and half.
And my tax differential.
French vanilla? We're working on that, brother. We're working on that. I told you the key to tax differential and I'll tell it again, you know, they will not pass a bill for tax differential until you have the majority of the county council on board. They just won't even entertain it. We can go up there and have a bill hearing and we can bring the whole city up there, but they will not vote on it without a letter. It doesn't have to be from the county executive and the county council, but it has to be from one or the other.
Well, for the public certification, may I?
Sure.
May I just add that all we would need to do is remind our elected representatives on the county council then that the last county to do anything about tax differential is Wycomico County.
This county.
And that all of the businesses and homeowners and voters in the City of Salisbury and other municipalities pay more county taxes than any other resident in the state of Maryland.
So, you know, we saw it in Frederick, the way Frederick County did it and they did it because they had the county on board and it was easy and, you know, I, I do think something needs to be done, I mean, I, I, I live in Delmar, I pay double taxes just like everybody else and, and I personally find it ridiculous, you know, and I think that the way this county count, the county budget is operated, and I don't want to speak on behalf of anybody, but we're here, we'll do it, you know, I think that there's room for a tax cut for everybody in the county, not just for those of us who are being double taxed, but I think there's room for a tax cut for everybody. When you're, when you're taking sixteen million dollars and celebrating that you put it in the bank, I, I think that's a problem personally if we're not paving our roads with it. So either pave some roads or put it back in our pockets, you know, I don't know, but anyway, that's, that's.
I don't think you'll have any disagreement with anybody sitting at this table.
You know, and I.
I would suggest you to keep in touch with us and let us know when and where we can continue to say those numbers out loud at all times.
Everywhere and every time and at all times. Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's beyond time, you know, and the economy's picking up, so I think that argument's leaving, you know, highway user revenues are working their way back to us, not at the speed that I or anybody else would like, but it's a steady increase. And I think we're at the point where that conversation needs to be legitimately had and not just, oh shucks, when we get time, you know?
I would agree with you.
But, you know, I mean, that's just my opinion, but.
I want to thank you for all you do for representing us because you, you have a very strong voice and we're glad you're with us.
Well, I mean, it means a lot to me to have the opportunity, you know, and, and you guys gave me the shot, so I'm trying my best to, to not let you down, you know, and of course, I mean, you all have my number, 443-359-1335, just call me anytime.
I do.
You know, and I'll see you guys soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other?
I think Mr. Cordry.
Oh, you have, oh, you.
He arrived.
You arrived.
Better that he explained than I tried to.
All right, Mr. Cordry.
Let's go back, where were we?
I don't know.
It was.
So, Mr. President, if I can, it was, the council's question was why two separate ordinances for the budget?
Yes.
And, and the numbers add up sort of, but there's maybe more to the story than.
Although it was, well, the ordinances on the.
Were lumped.
Why weren't they lumped?
Yeah, why, why weren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, I checked out the total of that and if we could add it line 41 to the amount that's in the amendment, $10,960.93 for the increase in the police department budget. That will get the math right. The total of lines one and two, total that, $10,960.93.
Which one was that?
Let me get to it. I lost it.
Which ordinance was that?
That was ordinance 2421.
2421, okay, got it.
Now, is that a type, is that a typo or do we need amendment to redo that?
I would recommend that we redo it.
Okay. Make a motion to recall ordinance number 2421. Is that the appropriate way to do it?
To, you can make a motion to amend it.
To amend. Let's make it, yeah, let's do it that way. Which line was that, Keith?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. And it needs to be how much? Make a motion to amend line 41 on ordinance number 2421 to $10,960.93. We have a motion by Mr. Boda. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Iarton? All those, any, any questions?
Aren't we supposed to say 122 like that or should it be 123?
Should be 123.
123. But that's, we can do that without an amendment.
That's just a typo, that's.
Yeah, that's a typo, we can do that. Okay, we have a motion to amend 2421. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes. And as far as them being two ordinances, I don't think it had to be in two ordinances, but given the sources of revenue, we're in two different, there was two different sources of revenue, it'll track better when we record it.
Fair enough.
Just provide a little better audit trail.
Fair enough. Like audit trails.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Cordry. Any other items for the good of the order? If there are none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.